Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Johnny Weigh.
Thank you. We've got some folks in the room this evening, which is nice. Anyone have any comments to make about this evening's meeting and agenda? Okay. Hearing none. We can move straight away to the minutes from our last meeting. Can we entertain a motion regarding those minutes?
Make a motion. We approve the last meeting, the minutes of the last meeting, September 20th, 2007, as presented.
Do we hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
There was one thing on the, under resignations that, and I caught this early this evening when I was going back through them, that when you accepted the resignation of Catherine Wentworth, our 35-plus-year veteran teacher, it was with deep regret, and I think it should be so noted in the minutes.
That's a wonderful thing. You for pointing that out.
That date was correct, right, on that, the 20th? I don't have my calendar. Annette mentioned something about this to me, and I'm just...
I'm sorry.
September 20th.
It was, right? Okay. Sorry, Annette.
I think it was wrong on the agenda.
Oh, it was wrong on the agenda. That's what she was saying. That's right.
We changed the agenda and put a fresh one in when we discovered that the date had...
Oh, right. Okay. And that's never gonna say anything like that to me again.
She shouldn't either.
Okay. Any other points regarding the meeting minutes from last, the 20th? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the minutes as presented with, or as amended, I should say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We don't have non-public minutes. Is that correct? Yes. Okay. Committee reports. I'd like to first go to Ms. Monagani to give us a student activities update.
All right. Well, I've got kind of a bunch of them, 'cause I've, this is kind of all the ones that have started out for the whole year. First of all, last week was our homecoming week, which went well, as always. The cross-country team has four more meets, and their next home meet will be on Friday, the 19th, at 4:00. The girls' soccer team is three and eight. They have five more games, and their next home game will be tomorrow versus Hopkinton at 4:00. The boys' soccer team is five and six, and they have five more games. Their next home game will be Monday, the 9th, at 4:30 versus Farmington, and the golf team finished 14 and 3, which is very good. Granite State Challenge has already had one competition, which they won, which was last Wednesday versus Waukesha. They'll be competing again next Wednesday versus Cavalry Christian, and that will be on TV in late November. Drama Club has also started up, and they will be doing the play Plaza Suite by Neil Simon this year. Some other clubs that have started up are Search, Ping Pong Club, Knitting Club, Woodworking Club, Jewelry Making Club, and the music department is holding Wednesday sessions in the Music Room. Also, next week, there will be the kneecap testing for grades 6 through 8 and also grade 11. And there will be SATs this Saturday, which a lot of the seniors will be participating in. Progress reports are going home on Tuesday, and there will be a junior high dance Friday, the 12th, from 7 to 9. And that's everything.
Certainly.
Could you explain to the folks, a lot of people might not know what the Granite State Challenge is?
Sure.
So, baby, could you explain it a little?
Yeah. It's a competition, like trivia questions, academic-based questions. There's a team of four people, four representatives from our school, and they compete against teams of four representatives from other schools. And each round, they move on.
So it's kind of a game show format?
Yeah, it's like a game show. Yeah. It's a game show. And, yeah.
So the, the first round, will that be?
The first round has been completed, well, at least, our first round competition has been completed, and they won. And so now they're moving on to the next round, which is going to be next week.
And the first round is gonna be televised at some point?
Yep, in late November. I'm not sure when. They're not sure when yet.
Okay. They won't put it opposite us, though, I'm sure.
I'm sure. They won't.
What would people do? TiVo, I guess.
Yeah.
Comment if I may. Can we check in to see if it's okay for us to copy that episode and play it on Ch- or Channel 13?
That would be neat.
So it becomes a local, becomes a local program we can show several times? It may not be okay to do that, but it's probably worth checking into.
Great suggestion.
Okay. Any questions regarding all those events that Sarah outlined?
Excellent job. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Mike Plasky unfortunately is not able to be with us this evening, so we'll have no town council report. Forrest, would you like to give us an educational futures committee update?
Yeah, just take a few minutes this meeting as opposed to the detailed time we took last, and just provide the board with the latest versions of the option sheets, those which we're getting ready to mail out to all the residents, as well as the cover letters that will go with them. The committee met Tuesday evening and basically made the decision that we're ready with some conceptual options to present to the community. They'll be mailed home, along with a, sort of a history of the current junior, senior high school building, as well as a, sort of a fact and data sheet about what, about the conditions that exist in the current building and what makes this process something we want to undertake. So here's a copy of the cover letter. If there's any comments on the letter, please direct them to Kathy and we can, you know, make the needed adjustments in tone or content. There will be two public hearings. While they're being advertised and have to legally be advertised as public hearings, they're really more public input and comment sessions than they are hearings, 'cause we're not asking for consideration of, you know, of a particular vote or a particular item as we might be used to doing in a public hearing. They are scheduled for October 20th. That's a Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m. And the second one is scheduled for October 24th. It's a Wednesday evening, 7:00 p.m., both of them in the basement auditorium here in Town Hall. So we encourage everybody, once you get these in the mail, to, you know, take a look at the material and come out with your questions and comments, you know, at one of those two meetings. And remember, look for hot, pink paper. I don't know if we bought it yet, but hot, pink paper, 'cause that's gonna have something on it that should get your attention to look for school information coming home. It's not a credit card come on or a mortgage, mortgage flyer this time, so. That'll do it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. Paul, we've got several things to talk about regarding the policy committee.
I'll give you the floor. Say what you will.
It, it may be my opportunity to take a little bit longer this time, so we can, we can trade. Well, as we discussed, Cliff, I'd like to start my presentation this evening by reading a letter which I've delivered to both you and Annette Broussot in her capacity as the district clerk. And I'll just go ahead and read it. Dear Cliff and Annette, this letter is to inform you that I intend to resign from the Newmarket School Board effective November 2nd, 2007. I will soon be returning to active work status with my employer, and this commitment will prevent my continued service on the board. I've given this decision much careful consideration, and although it is difficult for me, I do believe it's in the best interests of this board and my own family. I want to thank my fellow board members for their cooperation, thoughtfulness, and good spirit. I am pleased and proud to have been able to serve the cause of public education in your company. Finally, I would like to thank Superintendent Murphy for her leadership of our district. Mrs. Murphy brings tremendous sincerity, capability, and enthusiasm to her position. I've truly enjoyed working with her and with the entire administrative team. I wish all of you the best of luck in the months ahead. Sincerely, Paul Robinson.
Well, thank you, Paul. I guess, I know this has been weighing heavy on you, and it's not something that you take lightly, and I, I know that you have the best interest of all in mind, and you're, it's, it'll be a loss for us. Your, your space will be hard to fill. Your, your service has been certainly exemplary. The countless hours that you've been putting in with regard to the policies is just one example of, of your commitment, and I thank you for, for the work you've done so far and for the, for the efforts that you'll make in the, in the coming time that we have you.
Thanks. I appreciate that. You may want to reconsider that after I go through the rest of my presentation, because we've still got a lot of work to do. But again, it won't be for another month or so, so let me go ahead with my policy report, and I can tell you a little bit about, all kidding aside, what is kind of an ambitious plan for the next few weeks. I think it's important, though, because I think, right now, we have a unique window of opportunity. I have some time to put into it. I, as I will explain, I have been putting some time into it. And it's just an important moment. So with that introduction, let me, let me just fill out a little bit about what I've been doing in the last couple of weeks especially, and why I've been doing it. I, I have spent about the last week and a half or so going into the SAU during the ordinary course of business, business hours, and basically trying to accelerate this process of studying and reforming the policies that Chet really started and really the superintendent started is several years ago when she first came here. You've heard me talk in other meetings about the broad outlines of what we're doing, which is essentially taking the example of policies from the New Hampshire School Boards Association and trying to kind of use that as a framework or a guide to build our policies around. So what that means is that we'll have similar titled policies, policies on similar subjects, not word for word in, in most cases. In some cases, we will adopt language, because it's good language that they have. But that's basically what we'll be doing, using them as a guide. That's our goal. That does a lot of good things for you, which I'll talk about in a minute, about the why I'm doing it. So what I've done in the last couple of weeks is, I've gone in there, I took a list of the policies. There are 200 and, I think about 40, 236, 240, policies that the New Hampshire School Boards Association has identified as being of interest and importance to school districts in the state of New Hampshire. They put those 240 or so policies into three different categories. There's a priority category, which is policies that are required to be in place under some state or federal law. The next highest category is recommended policies, and I think, once you all have a chance to look through the list at the recommended policies, you'll probably think those are pretty important, too. And then finally, they have about 100 or so what they call optional policies. Now, the optional policies that they identify are important, too. It's, it's hard, hard to even consider, in some cases, those optional, but we can, we can talk about that when, when we get to the specific ones. So that, that's kind of, that's the guide I've been using, what I have been doing. I started with an empty notebook. I, I took about three major sources. And first, I started with the priorities, 'cause I figured they were the most important to identify. And there are 52 or so of those. And I started, I started with Section A. There are 12 sections, A through L. And I started with A. I took the priority policies in Section A. And I looked at what we have now. I, I looked at the model policy. I just looked at every source that we've got that I could put my hand on within a reasonable amount of time. Now, I will tell you, I, I didn't spend 30 minutes hunting around for policies. If it was not available, I spent probably an average of, if I couldn't find it, I would ask Annette or I'd talk to Ms. Murphy or something. We looked around, but I, basically, I looked at every source I could. I read the model policy. I read what we had. And I made notes about what I thought, you know, what I thought should happen at that point, to try and get the best possible policy in place, recommended. Now, so I've done that now for a total, and not just the priority, but I've, I'm almost all the way through the recommended, about 200 out of the 240 or so policies of the priority and recommended. I guess the NHSPA actually has 334, not just 234. That 234 is the priority and recommended. In any event, I'm, I'm about 200 of the way through that 234 in that process. I've got a couple of big, thick notebooks so far with marked-up pieces of paper and different policies. And the superintendent has told me that she's gonna make a, a pretty valiant effort to review what I've done so far over the weekend. And what we're gonna do is meet as a policy committee. Next week is our goal. And, you know, we're going to try and create for the rest of the board the following. We're gonna create a clean copy of our best effort at a policy on a particular subject. And it could be what we have in place already, word for word. In many cases, what we have is good. It's been looked at recently, and we're just gonna stick with that as our recommendation. In other cases, we found that the NHSPA identified a gap that we didn't have, that we think we, as a policy committee, or at least so far, on my end of it, should be in there. So I've, I've put that in there. So we're gonna do that. We're gonna bring that to the board. We're gonna have a clean copy. We're, behind that, we're gonna have my marked-up copies and whatever notes Ms. Murphy adds to them. Well, so you'll be able to see the history. You'll have a sense of where the clean copy came from. You can formulate your own thoughts about it. And then what we're gonna do, and we can talk about this later when we get to the calendar, but hopefully, I think it's the 27th, right, Saturday morning in October, we're gonna have a workshop. We already have a busy month. Already, this is probably one of the busiest months we've ever had since I've been on the board, but we want to be able to try and get that policy workshop in. We'll come in, we'll try and get you guys the notebooks, and Linda, obviously, at least a week in advance. They'll be available to the public a week in advance of that workshop. So if the public wants to provide input at that workshop, they'll be able to. And you guys can read through it as, as well as you can in that time. Hopefully, you'll be, you know, hopefully, you'll be able to get through it. Make your notes. If you have issues, identify the issues. We'll talk about anything. Everything's on the table for the board. It's the board's decision. And, you know, if we hit a spot where we're bogging down on a particular policy, then we'll, we'll, we'll table it. We'll pull it off. This is for further discussion. However, a majority of them, we're hopeful, we'll see, but we're hopeful that a majority of them we can get through with minimal concern. We'll see, though. I'm, I'm not trying to force anything on anybody, but, like I said, a lot of them are already in place. We've looked at them recently. You know, I don't know. We'll just have to see how it goes. The goal being, of course, and this gets into the, why are we doing this process? You know, the goal is to have a policy book that, you know, I've, I've identified four objectives. I rewrote the introduction, and I, I just kind of thought of four things that I hope we can do with this. First is that we want to make sure that we fulfill our responsibilities under all applicable laws, state and federal. I don't, it's just kind of the way it is. And furthermore, not just that we do it now, but that going into the future, if the law changes, which these laws do, like Family Medical Leave Act or Individuals with Disabilities Act, things like this, those things can change. They do change with court rulings, congressional legislation, state legislation. When we're aligned with the New Hampshire School Boards Association, we will have an excellent opportunity to stay abreast of those changes. They sit up there in Concord. They monitor everything that's happening around the state. They have a staff attorney who's very dialed into legislative changes and legal changes, changing legal interpretations of existing statutes, which implicate us. When they get something that's hot or significant that they know conflicts or changes, their policy is the ones that they put out as models, or just generally affects the schools, they will inform the superintendent by policy, name, and number. We'll be aligned with that. We'll go right to it. Minimal chance of missing it, minimal chance of error, very efficient, and clearly the best way to go. So that, that, that is our first goal, is to fulfill our responsibilities under law with our policies. The second one, and of course, this is all subject to discussion, too, at the, at our work session, but the second one I came up with is that we want to make sure with our policies generally and broadly that we are pri- giving the superintendent appropriate, providing the superintendent appropriate direction. Not too general and nonspecific, so it doesn't mean anything, in other words, vague, that she can't discern the direction. But on the other hand, not so specific that it's kind of amounts to micromanaging. There's a balance there. And as we read them and we think about them and we discuss them, that's something to keep in mind. That's an ongoing project. And also, we want the subject matter of the policies to be appropriate. The third thing that I think is important in what, why we're doing this and what we hope to achieve is these policies really need to be user-friendly and accessible to people in the district, employees, and members of the public. We know that. We, we're striving for that. We're gonna do that with clear language as much as possible and clear organization. And, you know, I did, you'll see, a handwritten note I put in on, there's a policy on policy dissemination. It's that important. And I included a note on there, as we've discussed, to the effect that we hope to see web-based electronic policies, like many other districts have been able to do. We believe we can do that. It's technically feasible, and, you know, we, we hope to do it. That would be a great way to maintain the policies. But generally, accessibility is crucial. Finally, sustainability. This is an important topic. Books of policies can, over time, collapse under their own weight. And what I mean by that is, if you just look at the sheer numbers, unless you want to have your policy not reviewed, like once every 20 or 25 years, you, you just have to do the math. If you have 250 policies, that means if you do 25 per year, you're on a 10-year cycle. If you have 350 policies and you're doing 25 a year, it's not sustainable. It just is, you know, eventually, you're gonna get so bogged down in updates and regular reviews that you just, it, it, it'll, nobody will know it's there. It'll be buried. It's gonna be like some silly state law that's still on the books from 1870 that nobody knows about or cares about. That's not, we, we want, we want living policies. We want policies that mean something. We don't want musty, old, ridiculous policies. So I think a very important goal is sustainability. So that, that's, that's an update on what's been happening, and like I said, we'll talk about the work session in more detail if you want, in the calendar part of our agenda. But any feedback on that or questions about what's going on?
You've done a fantastic job.
Thanks. Well, I feel like, like I said, I, I just feel like we have a unique opportunity right now, because I personally have the time to come in and do it for the next few weeks. And I kind of have a background in this from being a lawyer, so I'm familiar, familiar with this kind of thing. And I have a working relationship with the superintendent, and I'm familiar with it in the last year and a half. So I just, I just realized a couple of weeks ago that I was just personally sort of in a position to come in and do this, and if I didn't, I just wouldn't really feel good about not doing it. So that's why I'm doing it.
I just want to thank you, 'cause the continuity in something like this is very important. So I know, you know, you've been agonizing over this decision, you know, about your, your future for the last month or so. I know that this is weighed heavy, so thank you for the time, because it's a, it's a, you know, even managing the existing policies, much less reviewing them, is a, is a weighty task, so thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
I would just like to echo those same sentiments, and also that, and it is such a weighty task that I, the whole sustainability piece that you spoke to, it, it, it just begs that, that we really do a good job at making it as lean as possible and as user-friendly, so that future boards can not get caught in a, in a quagmire and have it become difficult to maintain. It would, it would be a huge disservice to all the effort that you're making.
Yeah. It, it, well, I, I mean, I just, I was saying, yes, I agree with that completely. And you really gotta watch that total number. It's so easy to add. And we will all add when we go through it. I mean, each one of us, I would expect, is gonna look through this list and say, "Look, you know, really, this is optional, but I, I personally believe it should be in there. We'll talk about it. We can do that." But I'm, we will keep an eye. I will, you know, I will be talking about the total number, because we don't want to get to 300. We don't want to get to 350. The National School Boards Association has between 800 and 900 policies. They've identified, so.
And they probably employ a few lawyers to manage that fleet.
Yeah, yeah. I can't imagine that, 900 policies. Anyway, I counted them up to 600 and stopped counting. So back to some more mundane policy committee stuff. That's all the fireworks I've got for tonight. I'll start doing more boring stuff now.
To the nitty-gritty.
Yeah. Let me, let me just read. We've got, I think, what is it, five policies here for a first read tonight? None of them is too long, so I'm just gonna read them. This is DK, Payment Procedures. All manifests supported by original invoices must be approved and signed by at least two members of the Newmarket School Board, as designated by the chairperson of the school board. The Newmarket School District Treasurer, after review of the manifest and signatures of the board, will sign or authorize the release of his or her signature before payments are released. That, this was, we're bringing this to you in consultation with our district treasurer, Bowles. Okay, yeah. Second policy for a first read tonight is Policy DKA. These are payroll procedures. All salaries and supplements paid regular staff members, substitute or part-time personnel, and student workers will be paid through the SAU Business Office. Proper payroll procedures are dependent on staff attendance, accounting, and on bi-weekly time sheets. The necessary procedures for this will be established by the superintendent and carried out by the administrative personnel. Compensation records kept by the Business Office will reflect an accurate history of the compensation and related benefits paid to each employee. Payday schedule. The Newmarket School District pays salaries on a regular schedule throughout the year. There shall be no salary advances, except under exceptional circumstances and with the approval of the school board. Salary deductions. Salary deductions are allowed. They are subject to the limitation of the accounting equipment. Authorized payroll deductions include tax-sheltered annuities, union dues, insurance premium contributions, and flexible spending accounts. All salary deductions other than those regulated by federal or state laws will be deducted only upon written approval of the employee. The Newmarket School District Treasurer will sign all checks or authorize the release of his or her signature before payments are released. All checks will be sent or delivered from the SAU Business Office. Policy GCCBC is Leaves of Absence. This is the one... This is the one that we rewrote from a couple of weeks ago. Requests for leaves of absence by bargaining unit employees shall be considered in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement and the Family Medical Leave Act. We're going to correct the typo there of 1993. Requests for leaves of absence by non-bargaining unit employees shall be considered in accordance with the Employee Handbook and the Family Medical Leave Act of 1993. Okay, two more. Policy IF is Instructional Approach. It is the policy of the board that instruction will be aligned with the goals and mission of the school district and the rules of the New Hampshire Department of Education. Instruction will be focused on meeting the instructional needs of students with different talents, interests, and development. The instructional program will include procedures for diagnosing learner needs, methods and strategies for teaching that incorporate learner needs, resource-based learning opportunities, techniques for the evaluation of student outcomes, and the provision of remedial instruction as needed. All instruction will reflect the acknowledgement of diversity and respect for differences. Instruction will also include, where possible, consideration of all available community resources, including but not limited to organizations, businesses, talented individuals, natural resources, and technology to engage each student in achieving the necessary skill and knowledge. Students will be encouraged to participate in year-round learning. Okay, finally, Policy IHCD, this is Advanced College Placement. Any student who is capable of and wishes to do college-level work while in high school should be permitted to do so and shall be given assistance in enrolling in advanced courses. Any student whose admission to a college-level course is recommended by his or her counselor may enroll in a course at an approved college for college credit at no cost to the district. If the student wishes to receive high school credit for the course, he or she may request permission from his or her principal, through the counselor, to apply the course toward high school graduation requirements. And that concludes the first read on those five policies.
And I'd like to just point out that each one of them includes a legal reference on the bottom, statutory or federal. Are these all from the high priority?
Well, I think, actually, we identified, I'm not sure off the top of my head, Cliff. I think, I think, I just don't know, I don't remember off the top of my head. We actually kind of identified these for a first read and put them on the agenda before we sort of really tried to accelerate the process like we have. This all kind of happened in the last week and a half.
The two payroll, the one around invoices and the one around payroll were really recommendations from your Treasurer, Rod Bowles. And so in collaboration with Rod, we developed that language to ensure that there was a proper protocols in terms of releasing his signature for and the signage of manifests. The other three were recommended policies from the Department of Ed around all of the new standards relative to extended learning opportunities, which is the Advanced College Placement, and around the standards with regards to instructional practice. So they're recommended, and again, we did kind of gravitate to them before Paul engaged in this, his very intensive work, so.
Do you want to talk about these now, any corrections or anything?
Well, this is a first read. If you've got particular points that you'd like to...
On the payroll procedures, on a DKA where it says, "Proper payroll procedures are dependent on staff attendance", should be a comma there? Attendance, comma, accounting?
Oh, right, yep.
Also question the, throughout the year payment? The teachers allow, are they allowed to take their salaries in one month's sum in June?
Yes, yes, they are. But they also have the option of being paid throughout the year. And they just take their salary and they divide it up by 21 or 26 payments.
So leaving this as throughout the year would be fine?
Yes, yes, because it does allow us to do that.
We do have student workers who work for the school system during the year?
On occasion, and in the summer, we've had some high school students help us with some tasks. I don't know if you noticed, this summer, we had a high school student helping us with some of the landscaping. He was clipping and raking, and so on occasion, we do.
And on the leave of absence, there's a mistake on family medical leave?
It's the typo? Yeah, I caught that. Thank you.
That's it.
Just a comment if I may. Chet, on the, the comma between attendance and accounting? Is it actually two separate items? Or you're not talking about attendance, accounting?
That's what I wondered, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's two separate items and the comma should not be there.
Paul, what do you think on that?
Well, Sue's probably the one to speak to that, I think.
Accounting procedures are not necessarily what you're talking about. They're talking about timesheets and proper accounting for attendance, not dollars and cents accounting.
It's an adjective, in other words.
Change it to accounting attendance, or?
Well, attendance, accounting is, seems accurate, just without the comma.
That is proper? Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just have a comment or question, Paul, on IF.
Sure.
In number five, the provision of remedial instruction as needed is fine. And I wonder if also we should not include something that is the provision of accelerated instruction as needed? Because we do offer AP courses and those kinds of things that are, you know, are accelerated in nature. Should we not outline that directly?
No, that sounds like a good suggestion.
Would you make that number six?
I think I would just make that number six, the provision of accelerated instruction as needed. I mean, it's just, you can almost pair, just pair it with number five.
Excellent. Good suggestion.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Chet, are you comfortable at this point?
That was easy.
Policies are always easy.
It's just a warm-up.
Oh, yes, it is.
Okay, so we will...
So we can put the 27th on our calendars, being here, all of us? Just Policy Committee.
That's for all of us.
For all of us.
Yeah, that's all of us.
You weren't trying to get off the hook, were you?
Hey, if he gets out, I do too, so we just go, you go, Chet.
Okay, unless you get a note from home.
We'll have a year at eight in the morning?
Yes.
You're going to bring the donuts and coffee?
Absolutely. I'll try to do healthy things, though.
That sounds like a diet breaker.
There is a wellness policy, actually.
Yes, there is.
And we'll discuss that over our...
As we eat my jar of donuts.
That's a student wellness policy, let's be clear about that.
I put an article on cupcakes in there, though. Cupcakes, actually, I read in the paper, are a lightning rod these days. People like their cupcakes, so that's an issue. I put an article in the New York Times in there as background information. It's how deep I'm going.
Bill Cosby had it actually right. Cupcakes and cake are the perfect breakfast food. What do they contain? Milk, eggs, wheat? It's all set.
Okay, I'm ready to move away from the policy discussion then at this point. Okay, with no further ado, Ms. Callahan, I believe, is here from the Seco School of Technology. She's the principal there, and it's great that we can have you to share with us what's new and what you're doing.
I have some information for everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for inviting me here to New Market. I'm really pleased to be here, representing the Seco School of Technology. This is my first year as the principal at the Seco School of Technology, and I'm really pleased and proud to be in that position, because it is really such a wonderful school. And I'm just here to tell you a little bit about what we do. Whenever I speak to groups like this, or boards, or groups of people, it's really hard to know where to begin, because we do so many great things at the Seco School of Technology. We're currently serving 57 students from New Market. And I put a packet of information together for you, and I guess I could just sort of, just quickly go through it. If you look on the right-hand side of the packet, you'll see a small brochure, and it's called Non-Traditional Programs at SST. We, as you probably know, we are, we receive funding from the Carl Perkins Grant, federal funding. And part of what we must account for is our non-traditional students. And by that, I mean, most simply put, girls who are in typically male-oriented professions, like automotive or welding, or males in professions like early childhood education or health sciences and technologies, for instance. So I just wanted you to have that information and let you know that's something that the state checks on, all the career and technical centers, to see where we stand. They have certain goals, and I must say, it's one of our most challenging goals. And it is for all the centers in the state. It's a very, very challenging goal. But just want you to be aware that we're always thinking about that and encouraging those non-traditional students and trying to find ways to make those programs appealing to those students. I included our Course Description Guide for this year, 2007, 2008, and lists all of our programs. We offer 13 programs at SST. 10, you were talking about college, 10 of our 13 programs are Project Running Start programs. And I will tell you that we're this close with welding. Our welding teacher is fantastic. He teaches at the Manchester Technical College, and we're really getting close with welding. So we'll be really, really thrilled when that happens. But currently, 10 of 12, 10 of 13 programs offer Running Start credit. Last year, we had over 200 students take advantage of that, walked away with college transcripts at just $100 per course. So we're really, really pleased and proud of that. The Course Description Guide also mentions CTSOs, Career and Technical Student Organizations. And those are organizations specific to a certain program. For instance, HOSA, Health Occupation Students of America, is the program for our health sciences and technology students. They compete at the state level. And I'm really happy to tell you that we have many of those students who compete nationally each year and travel all over the country, representing the state of New Hampshire and SST and our towns and our high schools. So we're really, really proud of that. In the left-hand side of the packet, the very first thing I have there for you to see is the, are the Governing Board Goals for 2006 through 2008. You probably are all aware that SST is, I think, one of the things that makes it so successful and so special is the, its system of governance. And though we reside in Exeter, we are governed by all six of the high schools and of the districts whose children, whose students come to our school. And that has really enabled us to do a lot of great things that, having worked in other districts in the state, that they're just not able to do. It's the cooperation, the collaboration that we have that really sets us apart. And in fact, other people, other directors in the state are really, they look at, to us as the model. We meet monthly with the superintendents from each district and with one of the school board members from each district. And just collaborative work that goes into just nitty-gritty, the day-to-day scheduling, how do you, how do we get 630 kids to SST and not have them miss their, you know, their science class here in New Market? A lot of logistical work, but then certainly also programmatic issues, budgetary issues, and things like that. But it truly is a wonderful collaborative effort that you can all be really proud of. The Governing Board has some very high goals here and always has high standards. These goals are constantly referred to at our meetings. I'm not going to go through every single one, but they're certainly, they are certainly there for you to look at. I will mention the business partnerships, because I'm not really mentioning it anywhere else. And those, the partnerships that we have with business industry are really, are really critical. Each one of our programs is required to have an advisory committee. And that is a committee of local people, business people, people in the industry that relates to a given program, whether it's the Exeter Area New Car Dealers Association or whether it is people at the, at area hospitals. They work with our different programs, and our students benefit greatly from their guidance and their experience. I'll also tell you that they're extremely generous to us as well by offering internships, many of them paid internships, job shadows, summer opportunities. They participate in our networking brunches that we have for each of our programs and our business roundtable. So we are, we're really indebted to local businesses and the people who do support us. We are, I will also point out number seven, and because I'm really excited about the new facility and new equipment, you probably know that we are renovating right now. We have started an eight-and-a-half-million-dollar renovation, largely funded by the state. And all of our programs are being renovated right now. Our building is 28 years old. We opened the doors in 1980. And we've just got a really, really exciting renovation program happening right now. It's a phased project. And the first phase, I'll tell you, we've got early childhood education along with the right to start preschool. That's, we're almost there, actually. They're going to be in their new space this month. Our automotive technologies, we have the largest automotive program in the state of New Hampshire. And we are building a standalone building, 13,000-square-foot, 13-bay automotive facility for our students. And I must say that the Exeter Area New Car Dealers has been particularly supportive of that endeavor. That's happening in a big way. We're getting close to pouring concrete floors, piping. All the underground systems are really in there. We've got cranes, steels, been delivered, so it's just a very exciting time. It's very real right now. Health sciences and technologies, kind of bumped up on the list, we're batting out of order. And they're about five months ahead of schedule, so that's really exciting that those students, and I'll tell you, it is a huge program right now. That is the, that is the area, which you probably know. In the state of New Hampshire, we're always looking at labor market data and local needs, and the health services industry has the largest need and will have the largest growth of opportunities for our students in the future. And in fact, we have so many students in that class. And these are students who graduate from high school not only with Running Start credit, but many of them with their LNA certification and other certifications as well. So when they're in college, they can get paid at a much better rate because they have those certifications while they're working towards their RN and their BSN, for instance. So they'll be in shortly. And the site work, we've got a brand-new driveway, and it's just going to make particularly handicapped accessibility, nicer sidewalks. It's just going to make for a much more pleasant and easily accessible building. So that's where we are right now with the renovation. We've got a terrific construction company working with us, Ekman Construction, and I can't say enough good about them work. They know how to renovate a school while it's operating. And we've had just no, they're just, it's just business as usual, which is my main goal throughout the renovation. On the back of the Governing Board Goals Sheet, just quickly, this is a snapshot of where we were on September 24th. And in a nutshell, I'm not going to break it all down. You can sort of just disseminate things later. You can see we have our 57 New Market students. You can also see students that we have from other schools. And you can see at the bottom, we budgeted this year for 630 students. We did a scenario with, you know, 600, with 630, 650 was really pie in the sky. We've never had 630 students at SST before. We have 630 students this year on October 1st. And so that was the number that we sent on to the state, and we were extremely pleased.